This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9.
All right, everyone, welcome to our candidate forum. We certainly appreciate your attendance tonight to learn a little bit more about the candidates and their positions ahead of this upcoming election. My name is Stephen Kelly from WQOW News 18. It's our practice with these forums to rotate our moderators for this event among the sponsors, and this time it is my turn. The event is sponsored by the Leader Telegram, WQOW News 18, Valley Media Works, Eau Claire Public Radio, and the Eau Claire Area Chamber of Commerce. We also appreciate the Chippewa Valley Technical College for giving us the space to talk tonight. Our format tonight is going to be question and answer. We're going to start with that up here, then after a short break, after we're done with our Q and A, each of the candidates will be at the tables off to the side, and you can come up and ask some informal questions of them. We're going to begin with the candidate forum. As you know, on April 2nd, voters in the Eau Claire Area School District will select or elect three of the seven positions on the Board of Education to three-year terms in alphabetical orders, the candidates as you see them up here: Aaron Harder, Tim Nordean, Eric Torres, and Erica Zur. We have a set of guidelines for this forum. The questions I'll ask are given to the candidates one hour prior to this event. There will be six in all, and each candidate has one and a half minutes to answer them. Each candidate will also have an opportunity for a one-and-a-half-minute closing statement. Timekeeper sitting right up here in front will give a one minute, 30 seconds, and stop signal to the candidates. Now, because of time limitations, there won't be an opportunity for questions from the audience, but as I said before, you will get an opportunity to ask them questions at the tables up here following the event. The first candidate to answer will be rotated. We'll start alphabetically, so that means that Mr. Harder, you will answer the first question, Mr. Nordean will move across. So, our first question: What are the most important priorities for the Eau Claire Area School District to ensure it is keeping up with changes in the way that education is delivered, including technology, partnerships, and other innovations? Mr. Harder.
Thank you. Can everybody hear? Okay. Thanks for having us tonight. This question is really an important one to me. In fact, it's...
You can hold your microphone.
Sure. It's...I'll just move it. It's wireless. This is a really important question to me. It's one of the reasons I ran for the school board originally, is to try to make sure that we're keeping up with changes in our society, basically, and that our classrooms are optimized for what's going on in our society, in a world where we have the Internet, where we have knowledge in some form or another is often available at the tips of our fingers. I think it becomes about learning to learn. It becomes about learning to love the process of learning, about finding that internal motivation. Classroom is always going to be a mix of external motivations and internal motivations. I want to see...I would like to see more focus on making sure that we're optimizing those internal motivations in our students. Entrepreneurship and creativity, creative thinking are just as important as learning, if not more important, in today's society. And I just think we have a unique advantage as a school system with...in terms of relationships with teachers, trying to inspire those students through those relationships, and I would like to see more emphasis on that in our district in general.
So again, thank you to all of our sponsors for inviting us here today to talk about the future of our schools, and thank you to CVTC for hosting us. With the impending retirement of our superintendent, which we'll touch on a little bit later, the Eau Claire School District is really at a crossroads. We have the opportunity right now to really lead education in Wisconsin. We can become a statewide beacon for learning, engagement, and intelligent management, and we can just have to reach out and take that opportunity. And so, to achieve this, I think we need to prioritize three things. We need to first bring forward the voice of our teachers. We need to unshackle them from one way of teaching and really allow them to bring innovation and new methodology into their classrooms. We need to engage them in problem-solving in the district in a way that they're currently discouraged from doing. And we need to really listen to them and let their ideas come to the surface. Secondly, we need to be dedicated to listening in the community. The board has to make some difficult decisions, and we need to be able to engage on those difficult decisions with the community and then make those decisions. And finally, we need a school board that really is willing to reach out and grab that grand vision that we have a chance to put into place that's going to affect the community, our students, our families, and everyone throughout the valley going forward.
All right, Mr. Torres, we'll go to you next.
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation to participate in this panel. I'd like to highlight five priorities for our school district. The first one would be equity. We have an urgent need to reduce the achievement gap between our students. Our levels of accomplishment are fine, but we need to focus our attention on the growth that each student can show at the end of their grade level. Another priority that I would share with you tonight is the need to develop partnerships and community engagement. We need to find ways to create early pathways to higher education, be it in the STEM areas or in the humanities and the arts, as well as entrepreneurial and vocational interests. I call these spaces of practice and growth for professional discovery. Third item two, prioritized would be information and developing information and communicational skills for our students. They need to be able to incorporate technology developments into their daily practice in those schools.
Well, thank you very much for having all of us here tonight and for making this opportunity available to our community. So I think when it comes to how we manage how education is delivered within our community, we need to really look not in how is education delivered, but in how we are inspiring our students. And in all of these areas that are highlighted here, whether that's technology, partnerships, innovations, all of that comes through our educators, all of it. And I think that when we look at how we're going to come into this new century, how we're going to come into all of the advancements in education, we need to look at our educators. And we need to strengthen the opportunities and the systems that are in place for them to be innovators, for them to be leaders. And we have fledgling systems in place in this district where teachers can bring a good idea forward to the district and implement it, and we need to strengthen those systems. We need to create a more responsive district administration that allows teachers to learn what they need to learn to implement these new practices, that allows them the creative freedom to respond to their students in the way that are going to allow their students to become the next leaders of our community. So I think that I'm really looking at the systems that we have in place, how we strengthen them, how we inspire our staff to become the leaders that we are going to need them to be, and look to them to implement some of these new 21st-century ideas.
All right, thank you, everyone. For our second question, voters approved a very significant increase in the 2017 referendum, but there continues to be financial challenges, including a $125 million unfunded benefits liability. So the question to the panel is, what is the path forward to pay for everything that the district needs to do? I'm going to start with Ms. Zur and move back across this way.
So, in answering this question, I think the first thing that has to be said is any person serving on a school board in the state of Wisconsin needs to be advocating at the state level for a different funding system. We need to look at some of the proposals put forward by Governor Evers and how those align with some of the recommendations made by the Blue Ribbon Commission on student funding, and we need to be using our voices to advocate at the state level to get a better funding system for our district. That said, it doesn't solve our local problem, and it doesn't solve the problem right now. We need to solve that problem. And I think...I look forward certainly to getting to understand the budget more, and Aaron has had a really big stake in that conversation at the district level. But really, I think we need to make some hard decisions, and we need to make sure that we're making those with our people as the number-one priority. So I manage my house budget, and when the going gets tough, we cut the extra things so that we can feed our people and we can keep the lights on in the house. And we can have the fanciest computers and the fanciest windows and the fanciest buildings and kitchens in the district, but if we don't have our people, we don't have anything. So I think that any solution that is made, it needs to be made as a community, as a school community, as the Eau Claire community. We need to be making those decisions, and we need to be financially responsible. We're going to have to make cuts, and we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions. But those need to be made in a diverse way. It can't all come from one place. It can't all be on the back of one section of our district. So that would be my answer.
Mr. Torres.
Honestly, so far, we do not have a clear path to solve this problematic situation in the most equitable and comprehensive way. We have asked faculty and staff to provide input and are waiting to see their ideas, but important and drastic decisions will need to be made. We will consider the suggestions, though, very seriously. I believe the problem is structural in nature, and I agree with Ms. Zur here. We will continue to be in the same situation in that if the current school funding formula continues to constrain our financial possibilities. It is obvious that the public is very supportive of its school system. That was demonstrated in the last referendum. But even with that proposal, the board at the time knew that it would not solve all the financial issues, like, for example, the increasing variation of healthcare premiums. I am in support of Governor Evers' initiative, Fair Funding for Our Future. Actually, I'm engaged in, together with Ms. Zur, in the training of neighbors of Eau Claire to advocate for more funding for our public schools. I also think that the school choice program needs to be stopped.
We'll move across. Ms. Nordean, next.
So, as both Eric and Erica noted, I think we're all hopeful that our new governor, a former teacher and state superintendent, is going to change state funding in order to benefit us, but that's sort of a passive thing, and we still have a divided government at the state level, and there's going to be some compromise, and we're not going to get everything that Governor Evers would like to have us receive, and so it does fall to us. And I think, like Eric, there probably isn't an easy solution. And I think one of the things that we need to do as a group is we need to work together more. We've started that process of asking teachers to come in and help develop some budget knowledge and look at the budget, but we need to get on that, and we need to be making decisions as a community. Aaron has really dug into the budget and has a good command of it, and so I'm glad that he's last because he will give the best answer. But we need more people on that. We need more of the school board digging into the budget and looking for ways to make those hard cuts. We need to talk with our teachers so that when we have to inflict some pain in cutting something, we can decide where that pain is going to come from together. And then we need to work with our community so that when we make hard decisions, we recognize the feelings of the community to understand the equity issues that they're feeling, to help us all support one another. So it doesn't become a North versus Memorial or a North versus South feel, when we inevitably will come back to the district, the community, and say, "Help us again. Support us with another referendum." We need to work together and hear those voices.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree with so much of what's been said already. It is a fundamental state funding issue. We are...with the referendum, we're a little closer to the state average, but we're still below it, and if we weren't, we would not have this deficit. If we were at the state average, we would not have a deficit right now. So it's important to keep that in mind. But that said, we have the money we have, and we have to work with the money we have and work within those limits, in addition to the state work that we do as a board to advocate for changes to the state funding. So yeah, we talk about 80% of our budget is people, about 20% is facilities and everything else. It should be 80%. It's a people business. It's all about that staff that works with our students every day. But because of it being 80%, it means it's a controversial and painful thing when we need to tweak it and if we need to turn it down. So whether it's OPEB or other changes to the compensation structure, we do need urgently to engage the staff, and we have...we're forming committees this week, as a matter of fact, to do that work, and it's really important that we do it quickly and that we do it decisively. We don't have a great deal of time.
All right, thank you, everyone. Our third question, and one that hits home for a lot of parents, the district is considering boundary changes, including the possible designation of Roosevelt Elementary as a 4K school. So the question to our panel is, how would you, as a board member, balance the needs of the districts and desires of the parents and families when determining school boundary changes? For this question, we're going to start with Mr. Torres and go to Ms. Zur, back over to Mr. Harder, then Mr. Nordean.
Thank you. In this area, I am guided by the principle of equal educational opportunities, and I understand that the school attendance areas are defined to support the mission and the vision of the school district. According to our school policy, the school board and the superintendent review the school attendance areas at least every 10 years in alignment with a U.S. Census. The last revision was made last academic year, attending inequity issues between the North and the South sides of our town. Any changes to attendance areas are made considering availability of space, proximity to school, safety, equity, and neighborhood unity. I believe that neighborhood areas, particularly at the elementary level, should be retained within the single attendance boundary.
Ms. Zur.
Well, I would agree with Commissioner Torres on the need to protect our neighborhood schools, I think, especially at the elementary level. This is a hard decision, and I think we always have to look at our district as a sustainable entity and a whole sustainable entity. And how do we balance the protection of those micro-communities, of our neighborhood micro-communities, with the needs of the whole district? And I've been through this. In my hometown in South Dakota, my elementary school, Howard Hedger Elementary, is now a nursing home, and I saw, I experienced what that did to a neighborhood, and it's not fun, and it's not...it has long, long-lasting effects. So in any boundary change, particularly, as Commissioner Torres said, at the elementary level, I think that we need to look at a curious solution. Are there phase-in opportunities? Are there grandfathering opportunities? If we absolutely must change a boundary to fill a school and to remain sustainable, how can we transition? Are there any ways that we can do that in a more gentle way? I also think that we need to make a decision. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it, and we shouldn't be having families at Roosevelt waiting an entire year to find out whether they're going to have a school next year. We should make that decision, and we should make it quickly. And yeah, transitions, important. That's all.
We're going to move across the table to Mr. Harder.
Again, agree with a lot of what's being said. This is a budgetary issue. From one facet of it, we have a version of some scenarios that show repurposing Roosevelt as a 4K site is the most cost-effective, much more cost-effective than replacing it or leaving it open as-is with fixes. But of course, we also have some equity questions, and that have been raised about, you know, how...especially along North and South divides. It too often happens in our town here. Is the North being asked to solve a problem with the South and take on the burden almost solely in that? And so, we have to take that very seriously. We've had quite a few listening sessions. There's one happening tonight, actually, in Mung, and we are in the midst of this. As Erica said, you know, ultimately, it's a decision that has to be made, and this is one of the things that the board faces over and over again, I've found, is these sort of Sophie's choices between two or more imperfect options, which are often divisive. And we have to ask ourselves, how do we minimize the divisiveness but remain decisive? And right now, the working...the listening sessions are what we're working through. I'm trusting in that process, that we will continue through that, and hope that we get to the best outcome we can.
So, boundary changes are hard because parents in schools love the schools that they're at, and why wouldn't they? We have 13 great elementary schools, three great middle schools, three great high schools. But overcrowded and undercrowded schools do a disservice to the students at those schools because they remove the ability to be educated as effectively as they can. And so, from time to time, we will need to draw new boundaries. The district put new boundaries in place for the high schools recently in order to address inequity issues and make sure that we're offering students at both of our main high schools the opportunities that the other one resolves. And so, we might need to make those changes for the good of the whole district and really for the good of the students that are attending those schools. The thing that has really made this hard is something that Erica has touched upon, and it's the board's failure to make a decision. This recommendation about Roosevelt and possible rebounding came about in October, and still today, there's no decision being made. The district is holding listening sessions for parents. We've had some parents at every single one, and that's been great to see their engagement, but only three school board members have managed to make it to even one of those. Now, Chris Hamburg Boyle is not here tonight because she's been at everyone, but she's stepping down. We need to be out there and listening and make decisions so we don't leave families in limbo. It's hard enough to switch from one school to another. It's another thing to sit with a year of uncertainty and not know what's going to happen.
All right, Mr. Nordean, you can actually hold on to that microphone because you're going to answer this question first. With local unemployment rate under 3%, including a shortage of talent for many career-oriented positions, what role should the school district play in equipping students for today's jobs in our community?
So I think that going along with the idea of our opportunity for casting a grand vision for our district going forward, we need to open the doors in our district to widen the number of options that our students have. It doesn't necessarily mean we have to open 10 new schools. We can do that within our schools, within our programs. We need to give our teachers the opportunity to bring forward their best efforts. There's no reason that education in 2019 should look so much like education in 1919. That path works for some, but it doesn't work for everybody. And if we engage more opportunities for different paths, if we bring more innovation zones like the Arctic Zone at North Star or Documentary Theater at Memorial forward so that students are passionately engaged with their learning because they're learning in ways that speak to them, then they're going to be better prepared to go forward and choose that post-secondary option that fits them, and they're going to be prepared to step into that on day one, whether that's going to UWEC, CVTC, Journeyman Apprenticeship Programs, whatever speaks to them, they're going to be ready for that because we're giving them that option. So we need to expand what we're doing in this district, not just give one path to graduation success, but give many. We don't have to spend a lot of money. Teachers want to do that in their classrooms for relatively to no cost, relatively little to no cost. Expanding our vision is what's going to help us address some of these economic questions as well as a myriad of others.
Mr. Harder, you next.
Well, post-secondary success is a key part. It's our district mission, and for some students, that will mean...sorry, pardon me. Post-secondary success is a key part of our district's mission. It's really the center of it. And for most students that will...for some students, that'll mean college; for most, it will mean some kind of career. Being ready for today's career world is very different than it was 10, 15 years ago even. It's changing fast. Critical thinking, creativity, entrepreneurship, I think, are very important. So are the rigor and discipline. And again, it's about finding that balance. Any classroom is always going to have a mix of those elements, but seeking out to find the right balance. These embedded schools that Tim was talking about, the embedded zones, is something I've worked very hard to advocate for in the district. It's challenging, but we continue to work for it, and I think it's really important. I also think it's important, though, to look wider to the entire program. We need to be thinking about how these ideas can influence the wider program so we can get this to as wide an audience of students as possible because things are changing rapidly. Finally, partnerships. Partnerships with local businesses, I think, are very important, finding ways to engage students in real-world opportunities to experience the work world themselves.
We're going to cross the table again to Mrs. Zur.
So, the head of Google, in an interview a couple of years ago, said that test scores and graduation, you know, whether you're graduating at the top of your class or not, had very little to do with whether you were a good employee. And he cited that we need...our community is shifting. Our community focus is shifting, and how jobs work are shifting. And in order to create 21st-century workers, we need 21st-century learners. We need those skills happening all throughout, particularly secondary education, in our public schools. A flexible learning environment, not standard, rigorous curriculum, much of what Tim was saying, that allows students to practice these skills, leadership, collaboration, practical applications of technology, problem-solving initiative. I think that those types of learning environments are what are going to get us workers that are ready for the modern world. And we need to prioritize ideas like project-based learning. We need to prioritize innovative, teacher-led ideas that allow students to practice those skills through their learning, not as a directive from an educator, but through their learning. And I think allowing students to practice in their passion areas is how we prepare them for the world.
In a rapidly changing world, we need to be able to help our students develop identities that can soar in multiple places, multiple spaces, and in varying circumstances. Just today, I had a meeting with a student of mine from the university that graduated as a teacher, a math teacher, just last year, and his first job offering was out of state. He went down to work in Texas with a much higher beginning salary than we can afford here in Eau Claire. So I'm trying to think about the tensions that are generated between our local community and the possibilities that it offers and the wider community, including the national and the global community. So in order to provide multiple opportunities for our students, I think we need to develop these, what I call, early pathways of collaboration between our area school district, the community college, and the university to increase access to educational opportunities for all our K-12 students. We need to make Eau Claire and the Chippewa Valley in general more attractive for professional educators. This is not just a school district problem. It's a wider community problem, and we need all to chip in.
All right, thank you, everyone. Now to our fifth question. With impending retirements, the teaching profession has emerged as one with a looming shortage. So our question to the panel is, what ideas do you have to ensure that you can attract and retain quality teachers for the district? For this question, we're going to start with Mr. Harder, then go to Mr. Nordean.
Well, we have, in 2016, the board passed a salary schedule that defined 2% salary steps as our cost of doing business to attract and retain the high-quality staff, which is part of our mission. We're doing that. There are questions now whether that is sustainable. We need to work through those questions. I hope we'll find it will and that we can continue to be competitive in terms of salary. We've improved it with that new schedule. But in addition to that, we need to improve professional self-esteem in the district. We need to raise ECSD's profile as a destination district, as much for the excellent professional environment that we can provide as for what may be a competitive salary schedule. And I think it's important to do both and to find a way to make both sustainable. In addition to that, I think we have programs to foster students in the district to go into teaching. I would like to see those continue, and I think we need to increase our outreach to a more diverse audience of candidates for our teachers and try to reach out to a larger group, whether that means going further afield outside of our local area. I think it's very important.
So Aaron just touched on the financial piece of it and the benefits packages, and we're in a tight budget situation, and we'll continue to work on that as much as we can. But we have to look for ways to be able to support teachers beyond just that because there's only so much that we'll be able to increase those things and attract teachers. My first year out of college, I taught high school science in a little town in southeast Iowa, and I went down there ready to ch- Iowa, and I went down there ready to change the world. And the very first thing I did is I put in a year-long community service project for students to do. Anything they wanted, 20 hours, had to be kind of related to science. I wasn't even pressing them that hard if they gave me any kind of reason. At the end of the year, a parent got up in front of the school board there and said, "Community service is what we do for criminals. Why are we doing this project?" And the school board agreed and shut down the project, regardless of the 80% of my students that had finished their time. Now, they got their learning, right? But to take that away from students was one of the first things that broke my heart as a teacher. Why would I, as a teacher, want to use the unlimited creativity that I wanted to bring to the field in a place where it's going to be hampered? And so, you know, you've heard me now probably three times tonight talk about how we need to let our teachers bring their ideas. I talked to teachers in this district, many of my friends here are teachers, and they say, "I wanted to do this thing, and I got told no. I have to go back and I have to teach the same lesson. I have to teach the same tests. I have to stay on pace with everybody, and it's killing me." A good friend of mine is thinking about leaving as a math teacher at South, the best teacher that my son says he's had in his whole time, because he's strangled by the inability to really get out of his box. And we need to let our teachers do that.
Mr. Torres, you are next.
Thank you. I myself found always pushing for civic engagement and community engagement and service learning as a hands-on opportunity for students. And after 25 years still teaching, I have not given up. I think that there are five reasons why good teachers leave. One is salaries and other compensations. We need to make sure that what we offer them for their work is, you know, going to help them move their families and their families' projects. That is not the case right now for some of them. The cost of entry and preparation, they are always going to be making a calculation, how much have I invested in getting this license and how much am I going to receive in compensation? We need to also change our hiring practices and how we manage or how we make sure that the teachers have what they need to do their work in the best way possible. We need to put in place effective induction and support processes so that they are successful and they can, you know, smile at the end of the day. And also, we need to improve working conditions, including school leadership styles, professional collaboration opportunities, shared decision-making processes, and accountability systems.
So, it's been a hard go for teachers in this state for the past eight years. There's no beating around the bush about it. I think that teacher retention is not just about pay, even though that seems to be a determining factor. I heard of a student at UW Eau Claire who, when asked, and this was an African-American student of color, when asked why, as a mentor, he was not going to go into education, he said, "I'm trying to get out of generational poverty. Why would I become a teacher?" That is not okay. But compensation is not the only thing that makes a school district attractive. Education changes lives. Education is for leaders with passion and commitment to the future of our communities and of our world, and they need to be supported and allowed to lead. If we are not treating our professional educators like professionals and giving them the environment where they can be the Tim Nordines that want to inspire their kids, then they're not going to stay here. They're going to choose a district that pays them a little bit more. But if they know that Eau Claire is a place where they can be creative, where they can be leaders, where they can maybe even have a teacher-led program or a teacher-led school, where they can collaborate with their colleagues, and they can work together to improve the lives of kids, we're going to retain our teachers, we're going to attract teachers, and we're going to be competitive across this state.
All right, everyone, thank you. For our final question, we see Superintendent Marian Hardbeck with us, and as has been reported, she'll be retiring at the end of next school year. It's going to be up to the board to pick her successor. So the question to you is, what are the most important qualities you'd be looking for in the next superintendent? For this question, we're going to start with Mrs. Er.
So, this is a challenging question for me. I think that in looking at a new superintendent, what I want to see most is a strong resume of inspiring educators to lead. I want to see somebody who has implemented creative ideas and has prioritized a healthy culture in their previous position. I think that I would be looking for someone with a history of responsive practices where, when there is a complaint or a problem, that they have led with grace and with a heart that prioritizes the entire community of that district and the health of it. And also, somebody who's really committed to that strategic priority of educating the whole child. I think that education is about so much more than a test, and a good superintendent is going to see that, is going to say, you know, the academic achievement is, sure, it's important, and we need to look at it, but there's so much more that we need to be providing to our kiddos. I think that collaboration, a strong history of collaboration as a priority would also be important to me.
I think that I need more than one minute and a half to respond to this question, but I'll try to be succinct. I would like to welcome a servant leader. And by that, I mean someone that is prepared to provide leadership in ways that enables and empowers all the members of the teaching and learning community. Someone that is concerned for providing a broad philosophical, more unethical leadership and perspectives on educational policies and practices. Someone is concerned with the impact of current important intellectual movements in the educational theory, including feminist theory, gender studies, queer studies, critical race theory, and neoliberal critiques, in order to provide academic and curricular leadership to the teachers in the district. Someone that is concerned for the disciplined study of the relationships among visual studies, media culture, community engagement, how they work so that learning can happen within communities of practice that go beyond the classroom. Also, someone that is concerned for the interdisciplinary work and serious study of emerging forms of inquiry to instill more and model more relevant and engaged pedagogies within the district. Someone that can provide academic leadership all the way through. And someone that can integrate personal and professional selves, providing that synthesis and perspective and direction to the whole district.
Very succinct. Thanks, Mr. Torres. We move over to Mr. Nordin next.
Certainly, the school board is going to create that laundry list of qualifications and the ideals for our person, but really, it comes down to one big thing, and that's transformation. We're thankful for Dr. Hardbeck and all the work that she's done to bring Eau Claire from a struggling place up to a place where we're really starting to succeed. But now, we need to take that plateau and jump to the next level. We need to bring someone in who's got the big vision that I've been talking about all night, who's ready to transform this district and take us to the next level. All right, we need a superintendent who's going to be out there talking with teachers, as Eric just said, modeling some of those advanced pedagogies, willing to let teachers like work to try new things and bring ideas, someone who understands all that educational research that we've built over the last 100 years to understand what's effective for students. But really, it comes down to that inspiring, transformative leader that's going to bring this district forward and really help us to take the next step. And I'm looking forward to finding out who that's going to be.
Well, we've had, I've had the good fortune of working with Dr. Hardback for the last couple of years, and, you know, I don't, we don't agree on everything, but we have had a very good, I think, a very good friend of this district in Dr. Hardback. And I know there's been controversy, but I've had the good fortune of seeing her and the downtown team work very hard on behalf of this district over and over again. And I think that's an important attribute, is that sense of responsibility, that sense of dedication. As well as that, team building, I think, is obviously very important for us. Maintaining the structures that this team has built while providing, also furthering our sense of professional autonomy that we have with the staff and the sense of professional self-esteem that we have with the staff, trying to bolster those things again. Budget is vital for us going forward and an ability to be creative with budget, with revenue ideas, with ways to do more with less. Again, I think we've had a lot of challenges in that regard. We've worked through a lot of problems in that regard over the last couple of years, and we'll have more to face. I would like to see someone who has a track record of success with project-based learning and with some of these other student-owned approaches. And I am also a big believer in teacher-led for reasons of, again, autonomy, self-esteem, helping us define what that means in a way that actually can work for the district would be important to me.
All right, thank you, everyone. Now, those are our six questions that were laid out by our sponsor groups. We're going to close with the closing statements. As we said, three people will be joining the school board this year. This is the final pitch for each of the candidates. We're going to start with Mr. Torres.
I'd like to thank all of you here, friends and neighbors, and those who are watching through the television. We're all in this together. I think that the Boards of Education should preserve its mission to promote and create equal educational opportunities for all students. At a time when nearly one child out of four lives in poverty in the United States, our school district needs to focus on equity, providing additional resources where they are needed, as indicated by students' level of performance. It is important to set goals for academic achievement and intellectual growth of students. In that sense, we need to advance policy that is supported by research and evidence, eliminating competition among schools and continuing to forge a cultural cooperation. The Board needs to focus on the advancements of all children's civil rights, invest generously in early childhood education, class size reduction, social services, and other research-based policies for all students. It also needs to educate the public about the appropriate and inappropriate use of assessment and provide research-based information to support teachers, parents, and caregivers of students with disabilities. As stewards of taxpayers' money, we must be efficient and effective allocating those resources that are most impactful for the academic achievement of all of our learners in the district. We need to find better ways to utilize the resources that we have. We need to contribute to the growth of Eau Claire and the Chippewa Valley as a more attractive site for more professionals in different areas, as well as for a diverse entrepreneurial force by providing world-class education. Finally, we need to envision an ambitious plan for the next 10 years to meet the expectations of 21st century education, including global learning, diversity, and multicultural education.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. We go to Mrs. Er.
Well, thank you all for being here, and thanks, everyone, for watching, and for CVTC for hosting us. So, I have been involved in public educational in Eau Claire since my daughter entered the public system six years ago. And what started as simple parent involvement led to advocacy, which developed a narrative of opportunity that I could see within our district. And I am excited to throw my hat into the ring of leadership for our community and for our kids. I have the privilege of using my talents to go to school in a small, private, Montessori classroom every day with three- to six-year-olds, most of whom leave into the public system. And I will keep, I will have that job when I'm on the board, and I am reminded every day of the promise of education and what it means to lead in a classroom. And I think that as long as we keep our kids and our teachers close at heart as leaders within the community and on the school board, we're going to make the best decisions that we can. And I think that I'm excited to get started. So, thank you.
We'll go over to Mr. Harder next.
Well, I feel actually very positive about the future of this district. We have a lot of challenges in front of us, obviously, financial and otherwise, but I've had an opportunity over the last couple of years to see the amount of dedication that we have at every level of this organization to doing the absolute best that we can for the students and families of this district. It comes out in every staff member, and it's really kind of overwhelming. I've been very proud to be a small part of this team for the last couple of years, and again, I see this at all levels of our district org chart. As for myself, as a candidate, I guess I'll highlight differences, for better or worse, you can decide. I have come with a business perspective. I think I'm one of the few on the board who come more from a business background than an educational background. I love education, but it's not my trade. I do have the longest term of experience working on this board of the four candidates And it's a tough job. I'm back for more, though, and I would like to put my experience to work for another term, to help move our district forward. So, you know, I do also have the privilege of knowing all three of these candidates, and they're really good people who also just work impressively hard for the good of the students of this district. So, I think we're in good hands, no matter where we land.
Thank you. Mr. Nordin, you get our final word.
So, last year after this event, somebody came up to me and said, "You were kind of loud up there." And I hope you'll forgive me if I was that way tonight, or will be here over this next minute and a half, but it's because I'm genuinely excited and passionate about schools and education, and it's the thing that really gets me going. It's that one thing that I want to geek out about that is also useful to everybody else. And I think right now, we really have a rare opportunity to make big changes for our district. We have an opportunity to reset the whole vision going forward and really move to that next level. We can make our schools smarter. We can make them more effective. And to do that, it will take a school board that's willing to seek that grand vision, to build it as a team with the new superintendent, with parents and families, and more importantly, one that's willing to make tough decisions. And we need to recognize that forward progress isn't going to be made by waiting, but we have to become the change that we want to see. We have to do that together, and we have to get moving on it. So, I'm ready and willing to help develop that vision. I've got the experience in working in schools to add that particular element. And I'm willing and able to make, to take on and then make those tough decisions when we have to do that, even when they're difficult. So, I hope you'll come and chat with me after, here in just a moment. I hope you'll cast your votes this spring for bringing positive change to our district, and I hope you'll vote for me. Thanks.
All right, thank you, everyone. And we also want to thank Valley Media Works, as you can see in the back here, is recording tonight's forum. You can check out their website at valleymediaworks.org. You can also find their scheduled rebroadcasts where you can view things like this forum on demand. And be sure to exercise your right to vote in the upcoming election. Early voting will be March 18th through the 29th. For City of Eau Claire voters, early voting will be at the Downtown Eau Claire Elections Office during regular business hours. That'll be 8:00 to 5:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m., I should say. Due to renovations that you probably see when you go down there, you're going to want to access that office through the alleyway. That's at 203 South Farwell Street. If you're in a different municipality, you want to check with your local clerk. As we've said before, Election Day is April 2nd. They call it the Spring Election. I'm not sure it can actually live up to that name, but we'll have to see before April. Polls will be open at 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can go to myvote.wi.gov to find your polling place. As we said numerous times throughout this, if you'd like to meet any of these candidates or ask your own questions, they'll be at these tables right after this. Thanks, everyone, for coming.